Thank you, Chris, Lynn, and Diane. All right. With that, we will move to introduction of bills.
Bill number 209, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $49,798.40 from the Missouri Veterans Commission, appropriating the same for support of various services for veterans provided by the Department of Human Services, and authorizing the Director of the Department of Human Services to execute necessary documents. Bill number 210, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $135,016 from the East-West Gateway Council of Governments, appropriating the same for support of the Critical Infrastructure Coordinator position at the St. Louis Fusion Center, and authorizing the Superintendent of Police to execute necessary documents. Bill number 211, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept four grants in a combined amount of up to $731,350 from the Missouri Department of Public Safety, Division of Highway Safety, with the funds from two of the grants being subject to matching requirements, appropriating the same for support of various enforcement units within the Department of Police, and authorizing the Superintendent of Police to execute necessary documents. Bill number 212, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Walton Gray, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a cost-share agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission to provide for the county to contribute funds to support construction of improvements to Interstate 270 between Lindbergh Boulevard and Route 367 by the Missouri Department of Transportation. Bill number 213, introduced by Councilmembers Daze, Fitch, and Harder, an ordinance amending ordinance number 27,772 by repealing and reenacting Section 1 and Section 5 pertaining to funds received pursuant to the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security CARES Act. Bill number 214, introduced by Councilmember Fitch, an ordinance authorizing St. Louis County, Missouri, to issue its taxable industrial revenue bonds, Gray Eagle Distributors Project Series 2020, in a principal amount not to exceed $21,500,000 for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of acquiring and constructing an industrial development project in the county, approving a plan for the project, and authorizing the county executive and Director of Administration to enter into certain agreements and take certain other actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds. Madam Chair, those are all the bills.
Thank you. We will proceed with perfection.
Bill number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Bill number 20 is held.
Bill number 32, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Please hold Bill number 32.
Bill number 32 is held.
Bill number 175, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder. Madam Chair, we have a substitute bill.
Please read the substitute.
Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 175, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder, an ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter 703, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974, as amended, St. Louis County Emergency Management Code by repealing and reenacting Section 7.03.070 pertaining to duties of the county executive during a state of emergency and state of emergency declarations due to a pandemic.
I move for the adoption of substitute bill number 1 for bill number 175.
Second.
Madam Chair, discussion?
Yes, Councilman Trakus.
Thank you. Madam Chair, by now, each of us has received and I would hope read the memorandum from the county councilor's office concerning the, what amounts to nothing less than legal infirmities and frailties with Bill 176 and 175 and 176. So, at this point, I think I would ask that the motion be withdrawn, that bills 175 and 176 be dropped, that new bills be introduced, that pass legal muster, so that whatever this body considers and votes on is actually enforceable. It is clear, based on the opinion of the county councilor's office, that bills 175 and 176, as written, have, as I said, many legal frailties and would be, if passed, unenforceable. As such, it makes no sense for this body to continue to consider them. So I would, again, finalize my comments by simply saying, I think the proper course is to withdraw the motion, drop these bills, and ask the county councilor's office to draft bills that will pass legal scrutiny. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilman Fitch.
Thank you. While I appreciate Councilman Trakus' arguments, we just received this, or at least I just received this, just a few minutes before our meeting started, and maybe it's a question for the county councilor's office. I thought that was sent to me. Was it sent to everyone on the council?
Councilman Fitch, yes, everyone received a copy.
Okay. So what time do you show that everyone received that?
They received them hours ago.
Hours ago?
Same time as you did.
Right before the meeting started.
Correct.
Okay. So, my issue with this is, is if you don't agree with the legislation, and the argument is, is there's a legal argument, again, remember who the legal argument comes from. It comes from Sam Page's county councilor's office. So, the county councillor herself is appointed by the county executive. They're the ones saying there's no legal basis to be able to proceed with this. We, as a council, can decide that that's not accurate, that that's an opinion of theirs. So, that's my comments on this, and I would just say that, that you should have a vote on this, and if you don't feel like you can support it, then your vote will reflect that, and then we would go from there. That's my comments, Madam Chair.
Councilman Fitch, you just acknowledged that you received this legal opinion just moments before our meeting started. Were you planning on sharing that with the rest of the council prior to the vote?
Absolutely, if I have a chance to. You may prior to the vote. Well, no, that's why I just asked the question, did everybody else receive it? Now that I have the answer, no, I don't need to share it.
Okay. It appears, though, that you were going to urge, as you did, you were asking for a vote anyway, even though you acknowledged that perhaps best, under your impression, you were the only one that even received that communication. So that's concerning to me in and of itself.
I appreciate it.
Councilman Trakus' concerns about the enforceability of this ordinance, and I think fundamentally it comes down to a question about whether or not the charter allows the county council to limit executive authority via ordinance, and I believe that the opinion of the councilor's office, and my own read, and perhaps Councilman Trakus' read too, as a lawyer, says that it doesn't. So I think there's some serious legal flaws with this, and we need to respect our county charter. Are there any other questions or comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilwoman Daze.
Yes, and I would also like to say that while we were on the meeting, at least while I was on the meeting and trying to get on the meeting, is when I received this information. So I have not had an opportunity to even look at this and, and have some opportunity to digest what is being said here. So I, I think that in itself is, is, should have been done prior to. This, this is not a new, I think the county council's office drafted this information. If there were issues with that, then perhaps they should have indicated that to us earlier than this, but it's difficult for me to listen to the people on this call or doing comments to this body and try to read a legal opinion as well. So, I don't know where that puts everybody, but I, I think it's a bit disingenuous to send us something while we're in the middle of a meeting.
Madam Chair, may I address that?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I, just for a timeline for, just factual for everyone, we received the subbills from Councilman Fitch at the end of last week. We have spent time putting into this. It is a very complex legal issue, and while I regretted to not get to everyone prior to the meeting, I will remind everyone this is an early meeting, and we pushed it out as soon as we can because we wanted you to have that information. We did not send that memo without knowing that Councilman Fitch was going to include this for the legislation packet for this week, so that's just the timeline and some facts for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
Madam Chair, for me.
Yes, Councilman Trakus.
Just as an aside, in response to Councilman Fitch's comments, I appreciate the fact that he's made the case for us now as to why this body needs its own lawyer, and perhaps going forward, we can consider a charter amendment to that effect. But until that happens, under the charter, our lawyer is in fact the county councilor's office, and their opinion is at least worthy of consideration. So at a minimum, both of these bills should be held pending review by council members so that they have time to digest what's in the memorandum.
Madam Chair, may I say something? Let me ask.
Yes, Councilwoman Daze. Go ahead.
For a procedural, because I think this is on perfection, is that correct?
It is correct, yes.
It is on perfection, so there will be another step past this point to address the issues that have been brought up by the, by the county councillor. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Harder.
Yeah. If you distraught listening outside of this call, why you think and why your office thinks this bill, the way it's written, and 176 is not enforceable when all we're doing is changing an existing ordinance?
Councilman Harder, I appreciate your question. However, it would be inappropriate for me to give privileged and confidential attorney-client information in a, in a public meeting, especially in open sessions such as this.
But you've communicated your opinion to the board, and that's a public document as well, correct?
Actually, it's not a public document. It's a privileged and confidential attorney-client communication, and is meant for your, your benefit as the council.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Trakus.
Thank you. Finally, I add that, just as a reminder, this body not long ago precipitously voted to give $173.5 million at once and ceded its authority and oversight over those monies, and we're faced with a similar question now. I think that it is the proper course to, at a minimum, hold these bills until every member has had an opportunity to read the memo and draw their own conclusions. The fact that it's up for perfection is, is really secondary, if not tertiary. The simple fact of the matter is, we have an opinion that both bills are unenforceable as written, and have both legal problems with the charter and state law. So, I think the prudent course at this point is to defer any vote on adoption of the subbills or perfection until each member is satisfied themselves that they have had an opportunity to digest a legal opinion and now make an informed decision thereof. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, follow up?
Councilman Fitch.
Well, I appreciate the request to delay. We do have another full week to digest that information and make any other substitute bills, or withdraw them, or drop them, whatever it may be. I do not, I do believe that this is a strategy to delay this. I think we've heard enough from the public that they're very interested in getting this issue resolved as quickly as possible, and I think that we need to take this up today. And if you don't feel comfortable voting for it, vote no. That's how, that's how I feel. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
I saw Councilwoman Dunaway first, and then let me go to Councilwoman Dunaway, Councilwoman Daze, so, yes, Councilwoman Dunaway.
So I, you know, in looking at the legislation before getting the legal opinion today and the predecessor legislation, as I understand these two pieces of legislation, I'm being asked to give this council more authority in a future pandemic than the county executive, who normally would be elected, in part to lead in a time of crisis, and more authority than our Department of Public Health leaders. As I further see this, the representatives of the political party that has consistently downplayed the seriousness of the pandemic, mocked mitigation efforts as simple as wearing a mask, washing your hands, and maintaining social distance, now want us to believe that they should have an outsized voice in deciding how to proceed in a future public health crisis. Because I believe in science, respect the expertise of our public health and healthcare professionals, and recognize that we are in the middle of an actual global health crisis, a pandemic around the globe, not just here. This is not made up. Simply could not be more disgusted by the politicization of these mitigation efforts that could have and will continue to slow the spread of this virus. I think we all need to really think about what these two bills are really about anyway, and I'm fine with Councilman Fitch's request to carry on with the vote today.
Councilwoman Daze.
Thank you. Let me go back to the council four weeks' statement, and I believe, did she indicate that she gave this information to everyone on the council? Is that what you said, Beth?
Yes.
And so, if, if this was information for Councilman Fitch, does that not violate what you've just said about the confidentiality of that? If you gave it to everybody? I'm just asking the question, because it seems a little odd to me, that if this was directed to him, and then it would be given to everybody else, then, I'm, I'm not following the, the attorney-client privilege here. I'm not, I'm not following that, so help me here.
Correct. Now, he, Councilman Fitch, it would be in the legislative packet for today, so the, it is appropriate for all of you to know our legal opinion on this, as he has made it into the packet, is for consideration by everyone on the council. Therefore, it is important for everyone on the council to understand the ramification of a piece of legislation. Prior to something being introduced to the entire council, that would be a different situation where we work with someone. But the council is the client, and in this case, since the legislation was going to the entire council, it was important for everyone on the council to know that opinion.
So now, again, tell me what the attorney-client privilege statement that you just made, what, what did that mean? You just indicated, I believe, to Councilman Harder, that you couldn't say anything because of attorney-client privilege, that I'm not hearing that right? I didn't hear that right, right?
I can't give, I, I'm, I'm not going to give a legal opinion in an open meeting. The county is my client. St. Louis County is the client of the county councilor's office. However, I'm not going to give a legal opinion in an open session meeting. That's what I was talking about before.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Trakus.
Just in response to Councilman Fitch's last comment, I think what the public wants, indeed, what the public expects and demands, is this body pass legislation that's legally enforceable, not legislation that's simply going to get rejected whenever it's challenged. So I think it's our duty to pass legislation, considering passed legislation that ultimately is going to be legally enforceable. Thank you.
And just a follow-up to that.
Councilman Fitch.
And I would bet you that if we do some sort of sub or drop this and come up with two new bills, there will be continued arguments from the county councilor's office that it's not legal, we have no authority to do that. That's just the direction that we've headed with this entire conversation. So I don't know that it's going to make any difference by redrafting something that will work, because I think when you ask the county council, redraft something that will work, they're going to say, sorry, can't do it. You have no authority to change the county executive's emergencies, emergency orders, or the Department of Public Health, Public Health orders. Is that probably exactly going to be what their arguments can be, no matter what we change it to? So let's have the vote, let's decide who thinks that we should move forward, and who thinks we shouldn't, and let the public know.
Councilman Fitch, I disagree with that, because you will recall that the original version of this bill was as a charter amendment. There were no disputes from the county councilor's office about the legality of that. I'm curious about why you ended up not moving forward that way, and, and not only did not end up moving forward that way, but never called for a vote in the matter that you are today.
There was no legal intent requested on that original legislation. That's why you didn't hear from the county councilor's office on that.
I talked to the county councilor's office about the legality of that, and it was not as questionable as what you are proposing today.
Did you share that with all of us?
It was a privileged communication. It didn't even involve an email.
Between you and the county councillor, or you and all of us and the county councillor?
Myself and the county councillor, in the same manner that you might speak with the county councilor's office.
So they gave.
So it appears, Mr. Fitch, Councilman Fitch, it appears that you are not willing to entertain a compromise to hold the bill as, as our colleagues are suggesting, and you would like to continue with your motion. So if that's the case, we can vote this up or down. Is there a second?
There already was.
Second.
Second round, Councilman Harder.
Yes.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Roll call.
Sorry, Councilman Harder? Did you say something?
I couldn't hear. I think we need to have a roll call.
Yes, I, I am aware. I am the chair of the meeting. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Nay.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
No.
Councilmember Clancy.
No.
Councilmember Trakus.
No.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on the motion to adopt substitute bill number 1 for bill number 175, there are four noes and three ayes.
The motion fails. Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 175 fails to be perfected.
Bill number 176, introduced by councilmembers Fitch and Harder. Madam Chair, we have a substitute bill.
Please read the substitute.
Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 176, introduced by councilmembers Fitch and Harder, an ordinance amending Title VI, Chapter 600, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974, as amended, Department of Public Health, by repealing and reenacting Section 600.030 pertaining to the duties of the Director and Public Health Orders issued by the Director related to a pandemic.
I move for the adoption of substitute bill number 1 for bill 176.
Is there a second?
Yes, I said second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Roll call, please.
Number Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Nay.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
No.
Councilmember Clancy.
No.
Councilmember Trakus.
No.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on the motion to adopt substitute bill number 1 for bill number 176, there are four noes and three ayes.
Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 176 fails to be perfected. I do believe that.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I think that was the motion to adopt it, not perfect.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
That's okay.
The, the motion fails to be adopted, so we will go back to adoption, or to perfection of bill number 176. Is that in order? Beth?
I think we need to go back to 175.
Oh.
175 is on the perfection calendar. You addressed the subbill number 1. It was not the underlying bill. There was, you know, addressing that perfection on that one.
Right.
Okay, so the options there would either be perfect, to perfect the bill as is, or to drop it.
Or hold it.
Or hold it. I will defer to the bill's sponsors.
I will move to hold that original bill, 175, which is what we're discussing right now.
Bill number 175 is held. And then going back to bill number 176, substitute bill number, for bill number 176 failed to be adopted, we can go back now to bill number 176. How would you like to address that matter, Councilman Fitch and Councilman Harder?
I would also move to hold the original bill, 176, on the order of business.
So ordered, bill number 176 is held.
Madam Chair, could I just have one last conversation? Is, what I look forward to from members of the council, is if you're truly interested in having any oversight of the quarters from the county executive and the Department of Public Health, that you provide some input, provide some comments on how that would work. If I hear nothing, I'm going to assume that you have no interest in doing that, so I'd be interested in hearing that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes, Councilwoman Dunaway.
We do have an oversight committee, and we meet bi-weekly to go through the budget, where the money's being spent, where community leaders have shown us the money needs to be spent, and just because certain members of this council refuse to participate and engage in that process does not mean there is no oversight and no accountability that's happening with the CARES Act money.
This is not about a discussion about the CARES Act money. This is about oversight of states of emergency and oversight of public health orders, not oversight of the CARES Act money. Two different issues. But thank you for your input, and I look forward to input from all of you that want to participate.
Yes, Councilman Trakus.
I've put on the record that I am interested in and will vigorously support any legislation with respect to limiting executive power that is legally enforceable. What I will not waste this body's time on is legislation that ultimately, if challenged, is going to fail in the courts. I think it's our duty to consider legally enforceable legislation and the subsequent ordinances that flow from that. Thank you.
All right, moving along.
Bill number 198, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
We will be having a hearing about this bill. Hopefully, it will be scheduled later this week, so I will be holding bill number 198.
Bill number 205, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect bill number 205.
Second, Daze.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, bill number 205 is perfected.
Bill number 206, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect bill number 206.
Second, Ryan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, bill number 206 is perfected.
Bill number 207, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect bill number 207.
Second, Daze.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, bill number 207 is perfected.
Bill number 208, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move bill number 208.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, bill number 208 is perfected. Final passage.
Bill number 320, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold bill number 320. Bill number 320 is held.
Substitute bill number 2 for bill number 385, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move to hold substitute bill number 2 for bill number 385.
Substitute bill number 2 for bill number 385 is held.
Bill number 14, introduced by Councilmembers Trakus, Daze, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, and Harder.
Hold bill number 14, please.
Hold bill number 14, please.
Bill number 14 is held.
Bill number 76 introduced by councilmembers Dunaway and Harder.
I move to hold bill number 76. Bill number 76 is held.
Bill number 196 introduced by councilmember Days.
I move for final passage of bill number 196.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 196, there are seven ayes.
Um, bill number 196 is finally passed.
Bill number 197 introduced by councilmember Days.
I move for final passage of bill number 197.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill 197, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 197 is finally passed.
Bill number 199 introduced by councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of bill number 199, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 199, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 199 is finally passed.
Bill number 200 introduced by councilmember Harder.
I move for final passage of bill number 200.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill 200, there are seven ayes.
Bill 200 is finally passed.
Bill number 201 introduced by councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number 201.
Second, right.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray? There she is. Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 201, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 201 is finally passed.
Bill number 202 introduced by councilmember-
Um, I will hold this bill and refer it to the Committee of Revenue and Personnel for a hearing.
Thank you.
Bill number 203 introduced by councilmember Clancy.
Um, I move for final passage of bill number 203.
Second, right.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 203, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 203 is finally passed.
Bill number 204 introduced by councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number 204.
Second, right.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
And councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 204, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 204 is finally passed.
Moving on to resolutions, Madam Chair, we have 25 resolutions this afternoon. Oh, resolutions one through 22 are introduced by councilmember Days, Dunaway, and Clancy.
I move for the adoption of resolutions number one through 22, please.
Second.
Um- Madam Chair?
Yes, Councilwoman is.
Thank you. And the reason for the numbers are, if you will look at the third page, these will be individually addressed to each of the members of this fellows program. So I won't have you to read each one of them with each name. So if you would be so kind as to read the resolution, please, I would appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Resolution: Whereas the Neighborhood Leadership Fellows Program, NLF, is an advanced leadership training program of creating whole communities, which is a collaboration of the University of Missouri, St. Louis, MU Extension, and the St. Louis Promise Zone, St. Louis Economic Development Partnership. And whereas the mission of NLF is to increase and amplify the voices of North St. Louis County and North St. Louis City residents at civic decision-making tables in order to produce more equitable regional policies for neighborhoods. And whereas 22 leaders from North St. Louis County and North St. Louis City, the fellows, were accepted for this nine-month fellowship out of a pool of nearly 100 applicants. And whereas the fellows selected all reside in neighborhoods within the St. Louis Promise Zone, an area with a well-documented need for more targeted investment. And whereas the fellows are already utilizing the training they received to serve on regional and local boards and commissions, to seek elected office, and to work in teams to develop solutions for the issues facing the North St. Louis region. And whereas the NLF graduation ceremony was held virtually on Saturday, September 12, 2020, at which time each fellow will receive a University of Missouri-St. Louis Chancellor's Certificate in Civic Leadership. And whereas the 22 fellows is each of the 21, 22 fellows is one of the talented and dedicated fellows who graduated from the NLF program on September 12, 2020. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows: The County Council congratulates all 23 fellows upon the occasion of graduation from the Neighborhood Leadership Fellows Program and looks forward to hearing more about efforts to further the NLF's mission going forward. Section 2, the acting administrative director shall send a certified copy of this resolution to all 22 fellows as a token of the council's esteem and gratitude for their hard work and commitment to create a more equitable community for all.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thank you, Diane, for that, and I renew my motion.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolutions one through 22, there are seven ayes.
Um, resolution number one is adopted.
Resolution, that's resolution one through 22, moving on to resolution number-
One through 22.
Yes, ma'am. Moving on to resolution number 23 introduced by councilmembers Clancy, Dunaway, Walton Gray, and Tracus.
Uh, please read the resolution.
Yes, ma'am. Resolution: Whereas the University City Children's Center, UCCC, is a nonprofit organization that has for 50 years provided a safe and nurturing environment where children from different socioeconomic, ethnic, and cultural backgrounds can learn and play together in an atmosphere that is respectful of diversity and individuality. And whereas the UCCC was founded in 1970 by a group of nine community synagogues and churches and originally served 28 children. And whereas in 1985, the UCCC became only the second early childhood center in the state of Missouri to achieve accreditation by the Missouri Board of Voluntary Accreditation of Early Childhood Programs. And whereas today, the UCCC serves 164 children and their family in a culture based on the UCCC's cornerstone values of trust, love, empathy, compassion, and joy. And whereas in 2020, the UCCC is celebrating its 50th anniversary as a keystone of the early childhood care community and as a thought leader in early childhood education and human development. And whereas it is fitting that the St. Louis County Council recognized the UCCC on the occasion of the 50th anniversary of its founding, as well as the important role it plays in the lives of the children enrolled there and their families and to the wider community. Now therefore-
You may stop there, Diane. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I move for adoption of resolution number 23.
Second, right.
Uh, roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray? Councilmember Gray?
I'm getting bad exceptions, all right. Aye.
Thank you. Got it. Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder? Madam Chair, on bill, I mean, on resolution 23, there are seven ayes.
Resolution 23 is adopted.
Resolution 24 introduced by councilmembers Clancy, Days, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Tracus, and Harder.
Uh, please read the resolution.
Resolution: Whereas the Reverend Dr. Starsky Wilson has for many years served the St. Louis community as a bold leader, a devoted pastor, and a powerful advocate for children and for social and racial justice. And whereas Dr. Wilson has served the community as the president and CEO of the Deaconess Foundation, the co-chair of the Ferguson Commission, the pastor of St. John's United Church of Christ, the beloved community, and as the board chair for the National Committee for Responsive Philanthropy, philanthropy, excuse me, among numerous other roles. And whereas, as president and CEO of the faith-based Deaconess Foundation, Dr. Wilson supported child well-being in St. Louis through philanthropy, advocacy, and advocating for racial equality and public policy change. And whereas the Children's Defense Fund, founded in 1973 by Marion Wright Edelman, is a nonprofit organization that advocates powerfully at the national level for the interests of children, particularly poor children, children of color, and those with disabilities. And whereas it has been announced that Dr. Wilson is joining the Children's Defense Fund in Washington, DC as president and CEO of that organization. And in that capacity, his knowledge, talent, and passion for advocacy will undoubtedly be an asset for children across the United States. It is fitting that the St. Louis County Council recognized the important work and effective advocacy of Dr. Wilson, which has unquestionably improved countless lives in the St. Louis community, especially the lives of vulnerable children. Would you like me to continue?
That, that's a, you can stop there, Diane. Thank you. I move for adoption of resolution number 24.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days? Are you on mute?
Sorry. Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution 24, there are seven ayes.
Resolution 24 is adopted.
Our last resolution this evening, this afternoon, resolution 25 introduced by councilmembers Harder and Fitch.
Diane, this is a lengthy resolution with a lot of good information in it, but you can just read the highlighted paragraphs since we're running late.
Yes, sir.
If you would. Thank you.
Resolution: Whereas the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, report entitled "The Importance of Reopening America's Schools This Fall," as updated on July 23, 2020, states, and I quote, "The harms attributed to closed schools on the social, emotional, and behavioral health, economic well-being, and academic achievement of children in both the short and long term are well-known and significant." And whereas the National Academies of Sciences, Engineering, and Medicine have urged school districts to prioritize safely reopening schools full-time, especially for kindergarten through grade five and for students with special needs. And whereas, a study conducted by UCLA and Stanford University looked at the most currently available data on COVID infections and concluded, quote, "The virus is 10 times less fatal than we first thought. The vast majority who catch it will have mild or no symptoms. Children are largely spared," end quote. And according to the study, the chances of a healthy 50- to 64-year-old dying from COVID-19 after a single random contact are 1 in 19.1 million. And whereas, a study from National Center for Immunization Research and Study from April 2020 shows that there have been, quote, "Few reports of children being the primary source of COVID-19 transmission among family members," end quote, implying that spikes in positive cases among students is not likely to lead to infection clusters in school communities. And now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows: Section 1, the County Council urges the County Executive and the St. Louis County Department of Public Health to encourage all elementary schools in the county to resume in-person instruction post-taste. Section 2, the County Council encourages all governing bodies for schools within St. Louis County to resume in-person instruction in their respective schools and school districts for grades K through 5 post-taste. Section 3, the County Council demands the County Executive and the St. Louis County Department of Public Health establish and publish clear attainable targets for when middle and high school in-person instruction should resume. Section 4, the County Council urges the County Executive and the St. Louis County Department of Public Health to allow all four sports to continue with all the preventative guidelines currently in place, i.e. currently in place, i.e. school, social distancing, when possible, frequent hand washing. Section 5, the Acting Administrative Director shall send certified copies of this resolution to the County Executive, the Acting Director of the Department of Public Health, the governing boards of all public school districts, and the governing entities of all identifiable private schools in St. Louis County which offer K through 5 education.
Thank you Diane.
You're welcome.
I move for adoption of Resolution 25. Second.
Before we take a vote, I wanted to make a few remarks before I cast my vote at least. You know, I had some conversations with our Health Department, and I've had some conversations with some of the school leaders in my district. Our Health Department shared with my office yesterday that there's not currently a Department of Public Health or County Executive order that says that schools should be opened or closed, rather, they have said that schools can decide for themselves, and they have been offering recommendations so that schools can reopen safely. I'm also concerned because there are several private schools within my district that have reopened, elementary schools, that have had to close and quarantine because there have been cases. And as I talked to school officials in my district, they stressed to me that what's most helpful for them right now is not a recommendation to reopen, but more financial support to be able to do so with safe conditions for reopening, as well as more stringent public health measures, again, to slow the spread of COVID. So, because of those reasons, I will be voting no. Any other comments from anyone?
Yes, I was also taken aback when I hear that people blame the County Executive for school closings, being a former legislator. I'm aware, fully aware that DSC has the authority over our school districts, and primarily our local school districts make decisions for themselves. We try to, one of the things about the legislature, legislature, and our legislators is that we, especially in our rural areas, they want to continue to have local control over their school districts, and they don't really want us to interfere with that, which, again, we couldn't at our level, and the state level was not done very often. I echo what the Chair said, and I didn't call to clarify, but she's told me she has, and again, I thought that was the case. She just confirms what I thought I already knew.
Madam Chair, can I respond to that?
Councilman Harder.
Both to those issues, if you look in section under "therefore's," what I'm asking for is for the Department of Health and the County Executive to encourage schools to open up, because initially, they were discouraging schools to open up. So, I'm asking for them to encourage them. Leave it up to the school districts, the school districts and their elected boards will be the decision-makers in a lot of this. So, this is just to give them some clear choices and to say, here's, here's our encouragement to open up, or if they choose to stay closed, they'll stay closed. Also, I think what's key about this is that the targets keep moving, and I would like the Health Department to come up with clear targets for middle school and high school that says what will close the school and what will keep a school open. And I think there's a lot of confusion over that with a lot of school districts, both private and public out there, of what is healthy and what isn't, based on the targets that the Health Department has come up with. So, this is just to encourage these things to happen, and to better clarify some of these particulars that have been thrown around for the last couple of months. That's what this resolution does.
I understand, there's a lot in your resolution, Councilman Harder, you cover a lot of ground. You know, I would maybe consider a resolution that separates out the piece about targets, but I don't think your resolution does enough to actually support school districts and safely reopening, so I will maintain my, my vote against it. Any other comments from the council? All right, we will take our vote. Did I hear a second? I believe I did.
Yes.
Okay, from Councilman Fitch, roll call please.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
No.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
I, and again, I'm losing, begging with, so, I think I hear you, but aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
No.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye. Let me go back, I'm a no on that. Again, I'm losing, I'm going in and out, I'm a no.
Councilwoman Gray, you want to change your vote from yes to no on the resolution? Did I hear you correctly?
Yes.
And Councilman Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Resolution 25, there are 4 ayes and 3 nos.
Resolution number 25 is adopted. Moving on to unfinished, moving on to unfinished business.
Item number 1.
Hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number 2.
There has been much discussion about this item among the council over the past 2 or 3 weeks, that this has been on our agenda. We were not able to come to a compromise, so the item that is on our agenda reflects, continues to reflect where we are right now for either an up or down vote. So, I will move that the amendment to the contract be approved as requested.
Discussion?
Councilman Fitch.
Madam Chair, for those out there, this is the Lewis Rice Amendment to the contract to have the county, have Lewis Rice represent the county in the case versus Lieutenant Colonel Troy Doyle. First, I want to reiterate my objection from in the past, that this is one of those blank checks that we would be giving to the County Counselor's Office with no cap. I'm not against outside counsel, but what I am against is just giving a blank check. So, I will be voting no on this.
Any further comment?
I have a question.
Councilman Harder.
Last week, we talked about some type of cap or some kind of graduated cap, and I think Councilman Tracus had an idea about how to do that. Was that ever considered, or are we, is that discussion over with?
Be happy to respond to that, Madam Chair.
Councilman Tracus.
This is without a doubt a very difficult question. I don't think anyone here takes it lightly. Legal fees are exorbitant in almost every instance, but we ask the people on county boards and commissions to serve voluntarily. They put up with a lot. There's a lot of pressure, especially on the Board of Police Commissioners. They have to attend committee hearings, be grilled by people like me. They volunteer their time and lend their good hand to the county for all the good of their community. As I said, one of the most prominent boards is the Board of Police Commissioners. There's a lot of scrutiny there, there's a lot of lawsuits and disputes. But the problem with putting a cap, I've come to the conclusion that the problem with putting a cap for graduated limits with term on retainer agreement, is that it will be exploited by the attorneys for the plaintiffs in every instance. They will delay, obfuscate, file, pleading after pleading to eat up time and/or money to put the council in a situation, and the county in a situation where their lawyers are prevented from acting. This, this body owes it to the Board of Police Commissioners, and in fact, to St. Louis County, to provide the best counsel available to provide an aggressive defense of the charges in this case and any other cases that are brought. And so, I think it's time we put politics aside on this and vote unanimously to approve the requested amendment and allow the Board of Police Commissioners, and through them, the county, to obtain appropriate, experienced, and aggressive counsel to defend these allegations. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Tracus. I agree, taxpayers are going to pay for this either way, no matter if we have outside counsel or not. You know, I, after wrestling with this and grappling with this for several weeks, I think that we owe it to the taxpayers of St. Louis County to defend this, or to, to have representation in this case that is as strong as possible, so that we can mitigate the ultimate cost to taxpayers. And so, that's why I will be supporting it. But it's a difficult decision, and it's not one that I take lightly. All right. With that, we will take our vote. I believe I heard a second, can you remind me Diane?
Yes, yes you did.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Okay, no.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
No.
Councilmember Gray? Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Without some kind of cap or oversight, I have to vote no.
Madam Chair, on unfinished business, item number 2, to approve the amendment to the contract, there are 4 ayes and 3 nos.
The motion carries.
Moving on to unfinished business, item number 3.
Receive, file, and the appointment be approved as recommended. This is our appointment of Dr. Gerard Hollins to the position of Director of the Department of Revenue. We had our hearing last week, I believe, and so, again, I would make a motion to approve the appointment as recommended. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Days?
No.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
No.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on the motion to approve Gerard Hollins, there are 5 ayes and 2 nos.
Motion carries.
Moving on to item number 4.
Receive, file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 5.
This is for the appointment of Chuck Henderson to the Director of the Department of Information Technology. We had a hearing earlier today. I move that we receive, file, and the appointment be approved as recommended.
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Days?
I will be abstaining, as you knew earlier, I was having technical difficulties with my system here, and so, I was not able to participate in the full hearing with Chuck. I'm sure he'll be all right, but I will have to abstain from that vote. Thank you.
Okay. Noted. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Abstained.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
No.
Madam Chair, on the appointment of Chuck Henderson, there are 5 ayes, 1 no, and 1 abstention.
Motion carries.
Moving on to item number 6.
This is for the appointment of Courtney Whiteside to the Director of the St. Louis County Municipal Court, and County Municipal Court Administrator. I would like to receive, file, and the appointment be approved as recommended. We also did have a hearing with Ms. Whiteside earlier this afternoon.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
1 abstention, Madam Chair, please. Again, same reason as earlier, I did not hear her, was not participating in that at all, so there's 1 abstention, please.
All right.
I'm an aye, Madam Chair.
Okay. I don't think I heard any ayes. Did I hear any ayes? Okay, motion carries.
Okay, moving on to new business, we have 2 prepared orders this evening. The first order, number 1, is in the matter of the request to the Records Manager for permission to destroy certain books, papers, and records of the Office of the Assessor and the Department of Police.
I move for the adoption of Order Number 1.
Second, Days.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Order Number 1 is adopted.
And prepared order number 2 is in the matter of appointment of Dr. Gerard W. Hollins Jr., Director of Revenue, as trustee for the benefit of all taxing authorities entitled to participate in real estate sales for delinquent taxes.
I move for the adoption of Order Number 2.
Second, Gray.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Order Number 2 is adopted. Is that our final order for the meeting?
Yes ma'am, yes, I'm sorry. We had 2, yes.
Okay, thank you. Getting, it's been a long meeting, all right. To the end of our agenda, any further discussion from the council before we move for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, the meeting is adjourned. Have a good afternoon, everybody, thank you.
You as well, thank you.